Good evening, like to call the meeting to order? We start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
1.3 approval of agenda.
Amen.
Mr. Tillman, I have one item. I'll be pulling item 5.1. Hearing no other changes, call for the vote. My student board members, do I have a list here? Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Rojo.
Aye.
And Ms. Scott.
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Section 2, special presentation, recognition, 2.1, San Bernardino High School Theater Company Performance Presentation. It's recognition of Women's History Month, San Bernardino High School's Theater Company, under the direction of Olivia Parker, will provide a drama presentation. 12th grade student Sophia Fuentes will perform a monologue from Our Town, a play written by Thornton Wilder.
President Tillman, members of the Board, Executive Cabinet, and the audience here this evening. My name is Mary Rhone Goodwin and I am the Director of Communications and Community Relations. I'd like to invite our Board and our Executive Cabinet to make their way to one of these seats here, outlined with the reserved seating section, so that we may enjoy our first celebration. Following the first presentation, Board members will come forward for a photo opportunity and remain standing. At this time, I'd like to invite San Bernardino High School teacher Ms. Olivia Parker to the microphone to introduce a monologue from the play Our Town. Olivia, take it away.
Hello, I am the troop director at San Bernardino High School, Troop 5334. Sophia Fuentes is a thespian at San Bernardino High School, which is an honor society for academic theater students, meaning she has provided over 350 hours of community service to our theater program. Our Town is kind of a quintessential, one of the most important plays done all over the United States and throughout other countries as well. It is a play that has commentary about the ideal life in modern America and it follows the lives of George and Emily Gibbs as they meet, fall in love, get married, and then eventually pass away. And this monologue is Emily coming back hoping to have one more shot at life and realizing that she didn't appreciate all that she had at the time. So, take it away Sophia.
We'll invite members of the Board of Education to take a picture with Sophia and her teacher. Olivia, that was wonderful, let's give her another round of applause. Thank you Sophia, so we'll ask the Board to remain standing because we're going to recognize two amazing schools this evening. Tonight, we're honoring Sierra High School and Golden Valley Middle School for Academic Excellence. We're going to start with Sierra High School, which has just been recognized as a California Department of Education Model Continuation High School. This prestigious designation is a testament to the dedication, hard work, and commitment to excellence demonstrated by Principal Mr. Hector Marietta and his staff in providing a supportive and inclusive learning environment for all students. In fact, I now invite Principal Marietta to come forward to receive a special plaque for Sierra High School. Earlier this month, State Superintendent of Public Instruction Tony Thurmond announced that Sierra is one of 31 schools across California honored as Model Continuation High Schools for 2024. These schools provide comprehensive services to at-risk youth through the use of exemplary instructional strategies, flexible scheduling, and guidance and counseling services. Congratulations, Principal Marietta. And to all the staff and students at Sierra High School for shining so bright and serving as a model of educational excellence. Let's recognize them with another round of applause. And now, let's welcome Golden Valley Middle School Principal, Mr. Gabe Diaz, to come forward for this school's moment in the spotlight. Golden Valley has been recognized as a 2024 Middle School to Watch, a testament to its unwavering commitment to excellence in education. This prestigious award acknowledges Golden Valley's innovative programs, dedicated educators, and supportive community, all of which contribute to the school's remarkable success. Across the state, 52 high-performing middle-grade schools have been recognized as California Schools to Watch this year. Principal Diaz and Golden Valley staff, thank you for giving students a nurturing and empowering learning environment. Let's thank everyone at Golden Valley with another round of applause. Audience, this now concludes our celebrations for this evening. Thank you for being with us as we celebrate these school sites who are making SBCUSD shine.
That brings us to... National Schools to Watch, have you done that, 2.3? That's the one we just did? And so we have 2.4, resolution and recognition of School Library Month. Like to ask Student Board Member Crystal Scott to read that for us.
Whereas School Library Month is recognized annually every April by the American Association of School Librarians. And whereas school libraries provide materials that encourage growth and knowledge, reflect the ideas and beliefs of religious, social, political, historical, and ethnic groups, and their contributions to American and world heritage and culture. And whereas, school libraries provide materials to meet individual needs, varied interests, abilities, socioeconomic backgrounds, and maturity levels of the students served. And whereas, school libraries are integral to the instructional program of schools and provide books to encourage children to read for pleasure and knowledge. And whereas, annually on April 4th, National School Librarian Day recognizes the professionals who are dedicated to creating and maintaining an environment where students feel welcome and have the print and digital resources to learn every day of the year. And whereas, April 25th of each year is known as National Library Workers' Day, in honor of the staff who supported libraries and librarians. Therefore, be resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District does hereby proclaim April 2024 as School Library Month, April 4th as National School Librarian Day, and April 25th as National Library Workers' Day. And calls upon school staff and students to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of our libraries and the joys of reading. Thank you.
Go moved. Second.
Moved and second, vote please. Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Rojo.
Aye.
Ms. Scott.
Aye.
And Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
3.1, acknowledged receipt of initial request to meet and confer regarding successor negotiations for the Communication Workers of America to the district. It is appropriate this time to conduct a public hearing. We do have a public comment. I feel bad because I know Ms. Teresa so well, but I can't... Your last name, Ms.? Oh, sorry about that, Ms. Hunter, Ms. Teresa Hunter. She plays the flute in The Piccolo. Bring your microphone on, Mrs. Hunter.
Right at the bottom of the page. Okay, how's that? Okay, good evening all. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Tillman, for sharing that. I'm Teresa Hunter with CWA Local 9588, representing the guest teachers in San Bernardino City Unified, here in recognition and support of the reopening of the full contract for negotiation. That is all, thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, that will conclude our public hearing. Be resolved, the Board of Education receives the initial request to meet and confer towards a successor agreement from the Communication Workers of America to the district. Need a motion?
Go moved. Second.
Moved and second, vote please. Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Motion passed. Section 4, 4.1, received public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the Board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policy, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intensely false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And our first public comment is from, I believe it's Keon Griffin.
Good evening, San Bernardino City Unified School Board and Superintendent. We are students of Blue Educational Foundation Soul Brothers/Soul Sisters Student Leadership Training, a training created to empower students with the inspiration and tools to develop their leadership skills while engaging in activities that support college access and success, leadership development, and character building with the intent that we return to serve in our schools and communities. The reason we are here this evening is because we are here to advocate for ourselves and our classmates to request that you fund our attendance to this year's Leadership Camp at San Diego State University. We have come together as a group to share our experiences from last summer's camp and ultimately identify reasons why this is a great opportunity and investment for this district and our students. The reasons are as follows. My name is Jaslyn Knox. I'm currently in my second year at Cajon High School. I was born and raised in San Bernardino. So being involved in the community is impactful to me because it gives me an outlet to give back to the place that has given me so much already. Currently, I'm the Vice President of the BSU at my school, where we share knowledge and diverse experiences. The people who inspired me to take on a more in-depth leadership role within my club is Blue Educational Foundation. Blue Educational Foundation gave me and a few other students at Cajon High School an opportunity to participate in a five-day overnight leadership camp to UC Santa Barbara. This camp gave me an opportunity to connect with other young Black individuals. One specific moment I remember is when a few of the camp members were downstairs playing games. I suggested playing a game of spoons. For anyone who knows what spoons is, it's a very interactive card game that can get very intense, very quickly. It started off as a friendly game, but then transitioned into one of the most intense parts of the night. Even our camp leader, someone who would be similar to a resident advisor on a college campus, were getting in the game of a lifetime. The game night was just one example of community and the meeting opportunities to form connections through the camp. Another example is the bonds the girls made in the dorms. I remember having to ask for help on my hair because I forgot my edge brush, a vital tool in every Black girl's hair routine. Another girl had asked me for help with her makeup for our end-of-the-camp ceremony, an event to commemorate our time together. From a person who's never lived with girls my age, this is one of the best experiences I've had thus far because it helped me to form connections with girls my age who also look like me. These are just some of the reasons why I would love for us to be able to have another leadership camp where people who already participated can go and new Soul Sisters and Soul Brothers can experience this camp as well. We are looking to you, San Bernardino City Unified School District and School Board, to help me and other Black kids in the district experience a summer of the lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you. Nubia Nelson?
My name is Nacyon Johnson. I'm a junior at Eisenhower High School in Rialto, California. Even though I do not attend a school in San Bernardino, I'm here standing in solidarity with my Soul Brothers and Sisters. I want to inform you about the Soul Sister and Soul Brother Program and why it would be beneficial if you funded us another trip. This camp had an everlasting effect on me as a person. The five-day trip to Santa Barbara allowed me to step out of my comfort zone and do things I normally wouldn't do on a day-to-day basis. Contingent upon participating in different self-growth activities, this camp allowed me to learn more about myself and understand the things I enjoy doing. I've become a different activity such as choir, captain of the dance team, the junior ASB treasurer, theater, and more. This camp taught me that you can't learn about something unless you participate in it. For instance, before I realized I was actually good at writing poetry, I never had performed it. And I had to, I can't. And ever since, it never stopped since because it is something I enjoy. One time I remember is when as a collective, we had to forgive these two students who had an immense impact on the camp. From that incident, I learned that allowing a person to receive shame because they made a mistake can cause more damage than forgiving them, is more powerful and impactful. As a group, allowing these students to continue to participate forced me to acquire the skill of understanding, rather than deeming someone negative based on one mistake. This situation taught me that forgiveness is sometimes the better option than holding a grudge, allowing me to learn better ways to effectively communicate my issues with my peers without feeling insecure about my feelings. By allowing this camp to continue, you will give students like me a chance to learn social-emotional skills to help students become the best versions of themselves. By funding an experience like this, it will allow students in our society to grow as a whole. By not funding this, you will be denying students the opportunity for potential growth. So consider providing us another chance for this bonding experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others from your group that submitted public comments? I don't have them in front of me, which, what names are they? Okay, we'll go with Cheyenne Edwards.
My name is Cheyenne Edwards and I am an 11th grader at Eisenhower High School in the Rialto School District. I've always been a rather shy and closed-off kid, so social gatherings have always made me feel uncomfortable. But the one time that I chose to...
Is your microphone on?
I, I think so? Can you hear better?
Yes.
Do you want me to start over? So the one time that I chose to step out of my comfort zone, I'm glad that I did. So even though public speaking makes you weak to my knees or blue, I would gladly stand up and speak out because thanks to them and the other kids I've met, I now feel a bit more comfortable doing so. The very first time I heard about the Blue Educational Foundation, my first thought was just being able to have something to do this summer, but it ended up being so much more than that. During my time with them, I have learned life lessons that will stick with me forever, such as learning to share my space, stick to a schedule, and to forgive. Among that, I was able to bond with people who I never thought I'd bond with and experience cultural moments with people my age and gain even more pride in my culture. This meant a lot to me simply because I'm the oldest of my generation, so I'm never really around kids my age. And even if I do go outside, I'm usually surrounded by people outside of my culture who most likely wouldn't understand my experiences. One moment that will stick with me forever is when all of us were at the beach together digging a hole. As simple and childish as that sounds, it was a moment where we all got together, joked about any and everything, and all together just vibed. So I would greatly appreciate it if you helped us get to enjoy that experience once again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jaslyn Knox?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, San Bernardino Unified School Board. I am Nubia Prince Nelson, a junior at Indian Springs High School. And I am honored to represent the Blue Educational Foundation today. Today, I stand before you just to say it lightly, on the transformative experience offered by the Soul Brothers and Soul Sisters Leadership Camp. This camp, this camp is not just an ordinary gathering. It's a beacon, it's a beacon of empowerment, fostering leadership skills, self-discovery, and community building among the participants through engaging workshops, mentorship programs, and outdoor activities. The camp equips young minds with tools and mindset needed to navigate challenges, embrace their potential, and become influential leaders in their communities. As a proud ambassador of the Blue Educational Foundation, I urge you to join us in supporting students to be in attendance to this invaluable experience that nurtures the students and leaders of tomorrow. I'm done.
Thank you. And Nacyon Johnson?
Good evening, everyone. I am Keon Griffin, a junior at Cajon High School and son of Devana Robertson, President of the District's African-American Parent Advisory Council. And I'm representing Blue Educational Foundation and the Soul Sisters/Soul Brothers Leadership Camp. The Soul Sisters and Soul Brothers, the Soul Brothers Leadership Camp is a remarkable camp that has been instrumental in guiding young individuals like myself through personal growth and life challenges. For the past five years, I've been actively participating in this camp, soaking in knowledge not only about leadership, but also about my African-American heritage and essence of manhood. Every year has presented new layers of knowledge and understanding for me, making me enthusiastic about returning each summer to absorb more wisdom and insight. When I first joined the program, although I was the youngest in the group, I immediately gravitated to and saw guidance from older peers and chaperones, looking up to them for advice and direction. Their insights have helped me prepare for the future and focus on what matters in life. From these relationships, I have been able to develop three personal values, and that's my community, my history, and my legacy. This mentorship dynamic within the camp has been invaluable and has instilled in me a sense of responsibility towards my community and self. I am forever grateful because the influence of these role models has contributed to the design of the man I'm becoming and fully inspired to be. The Soul Brothers and Soul Sisters Leadership Camp serves as a crucial resource for the Black community, providing us with essential life skills and creating a safe haven where we can freely exchange ideas without fear of judgment. This program gave some of my peers their first opportunity to leave the land. This program gave us, gave some of my peers their first opportunity to leave the Atlantic Empire or visit and/or visit a university campus, which is another reason why this program is essential to this community. It expands the mind of youth that have only, that have only seen a fixed view. And I am deeply grateful for Blue for their unwavering support and dedication, and I applaud the members of the school board to continue investing in programs like this that empower and uplift the youth in this community by letting us go to San Diego State for the week. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Martin? Before you start, I had a comment by Board Member Alexander.
Great job to the scholars that came up and they shared about your experiences at UC Santa Barbara and your intent for Cal State, San Diego, or San Diego State. What I missed, though, was the date. When is the date of the camp?
July? July fifteenth. July.
I didn't want to scream from the audience. July fifteenth through the nineteenth, so this year, 2024.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And just to clarify, this this speaker is the start of a different group. We had a question. Mrs. Chahaski?
Has this come before the board is a consent item or is it?
Superintendent said that the board is going, the district is going to-
I didn't see it on here, so it's not on today.
We have it on.
Okay, that's why I was looking for it. So I was just trying to make sure I didn't miss it. Okay, thank you.
There's Donna Martin?
Yeah, that's my wife. I'll go first. I'm Devon Martin. Good evening. As I said, my name is Devon Martin. I'm the Executive Director and Co-Founder of Joyco Youth and Family Services, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to address you here today. Before I delve into our organization's impact, I want to acknowledge the diverse group of people present in the room to support us tonight: educators, parents, volunteers, and students. Brought me a lot of joy tonight, just their presence. Each one of them has finished first, experienced firsthand the positive changes and transformation that Joyco is bringing to our schools and community. I stand before you today as a proud resident of San Bernardino for over a decade. I'm a father of three wonderful kids, sixteen, thirteen, and nine, and this year will be celebrating, my wife and I, nineteen years of marriage. My journey has been shaped by my parents, my faith, and my educational background, holding a business degree in organizational leadership from Azusa Pacific University. But more importantly, it's been defined by the relationships I've made while serving in the community. In 2015, I began volunteering in San Bernardino schools, driven by a deep sense of purpose to make a positive impact. I just wanted to make a difference. This journey led me to a pivotal moment where I made the courageous decision to leave my full-time job, left all of its comforts and its benefits, full-time benefits, to fully dedicate myself to supporting our schools. This was not an easy choice for me to make. It was the scariest decision of my life. Yet, I was fueled by a desire to give our students hope and create meaningful change in our schools. Out of this dedication, Joyco Youth and Family Services was born in 2018. Our mission is clear: to develop leaders who will not only impact their schools, but build a stronger, more connected community. Today, I stand here representing Joyco and our collective mission. So why are we here today? Firstly, to address the recent termination of our contract with EXL, which has left many students feeling confused and disheartened, and myself as well. Many were on the verge of receiving their leadership training certificate. It's a testimony to their hard work and dedication. We cannot let their efforts go in vain, and that is why we're advocating today for a new contract to ensure that these students have the opportunity to complete the program and earn their certificates. Secondly, we're here to showcase the full scope of Joyco's impact on our community. Through testimonies from parents and students and our team, you will hear firsthand accounts of the transformative work we are doing here. Lastly, we will represent hard data, concrete evidence of the positive outcomes and changes that we have achieved. Our impact is not anecdotal. It is measurable and sustainable. As educators, parents, volunteers, and students, we all play a crucial role in shaping the future of our community. Together, let's ensure that every student, every student has a chance to succeed and become the leaders our world needs today. Not tomorrow, not next week, not next year, not when they graduate, but today. Thank you for your time. Thank you for letting us be here, and let's work together hand in hand to make a difference that lasts for generations to come.
Thank you very much.
I'm Donna Martin. Hello, my name is Donna Martin, and I am the co-founder of the Joy Company. Thank you for taking the time to hear us today. As someone who has served in this district for over six years, pastored in this community for over ten, and as a mother in this community, my heart aches for the next generation. As you are all aware, COVID was detrimental to the emotional and mental health of these kids. When they came back to school, they were markedly different. Many of them were anxious and unmotivated, socially awkward, full of fear, and without hope. Now, I could share an entire list of grievances against the CAPS department, grievances that many community partners and CAPS employees past and present share, but I do not feel that would be a productive use of my time today. As you will see from our data, our team was very effective at reaching students. We pride ourselves in being able to create spaces and experiences that students love being a part of, and we got to watch them blossom into great leaders as a result. I want to share what we found that works with students: having a daily, consistent, encouraging presence, reminding students that they have a purpose and that their existence on this earth is a gift to us all; acknowledging the anxiety that they feel because of the world they are growing up in, and giving them the tools to move past that fear; keeping our promises; being a listening ear; following up on home situations that were volatile; giving them enough snacks on Friday so that they could eat for the entire weekend; challenging them to rise to their full potential and to eliminate any excuses that stand in their way; encouraging them to decrease their cursing so that professional opportunities don't pass them by; reminding our African-American students that we see them and that they stand on our shoulders; translating every single sentence into Spanish for our ESL learners, and giving them personal attention to make sure that they understand each leadership lesson; showing them that they are the next generation of community leaders. That's how we made hope happen. As a community member, I pray that our rules and our policies, our politics and our prejudgments don't become barriers for students getting the help that they need. I pray that we don't major in minors. I pray that we don't keep running around in circles, holding on to old systems, thinking that they're going to reach a post-COVID generation. I pray, as this district moves into the community model, that it relies on the expertise of the community that knows how to reach students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I stand before you today-
Hold on one second. What is your name?
Jessica Franco.
Thank you, Jessica.
Good evening. I stand before you today as someone who has dedicated a decade of her life to the betterment of our students here in San Bernardino. My name is Jessica Franco, and for the past ten years, I've had the privilege of serving middle school and high school students here in this district. Today, I would love to share with you the numerical data that speaks volumes about the profound impacts of Leadership Club on our students. Let's start with attendance. Over the past year, we witnessed an impressive fourteen thousand and eleven total check-ins, with two thousand two hundred and thirty-four unique students benefiting from our program at least once. These numbers aren't just figures. They represent the tangible reach of our efforts. Moving on to social and emotional development. From August 2023 to February 2024 alone, three hundred and fifteen presentations were completed. Even more remarkable is that one out of every five students who completed our lessons went on to deliver at least one presentation, a testament to the confidence and skills instilled by our club. Our commitment to embracing cultural diversity is reflected in our schools, in our student demographics, with our daily clubs having seventy-seven point six percent Hispanic students, fourteen point three percent Black African-American students, and five point one percent being Caucasian, Asian, and Pacific Islander students actively participating. Recognizing the importance of inclusion, we launched a tailored version of Leadership Club for ESL students. Despite starting with thirty-three interested students, we proudly launched with twelve dedicated participants, proving that barriers can be overcome with the right support and encouragement. Student engagement lies at the heart of our mission, and the numbers, they speak for themselves. A total of one thousand six hundred and sixty-three student lessons were completed during our time together. And if you would take a look at this wagon right next to me, these are all the lessons that students completed in our time here working with the district. Alongside of that was four hundred and sixty-four incompleted lessons. Each of these lessons you see here represents an opportunity for growth, for learning, and for empowerment. Some of the topics discussed during our club were as followed: lead yourself well, lead with integrity, lead with authenticity, and lead with vision, and so much more. But beyond these statistics lie the real essence of our work, the stories behind each name. Each student who walked through our doors came with dreams, with aspirations, and challenges. We firmly believe that every story has the power to make a lasting impact, not just within the walls of our schools today, but in the community at large. So in conclusion, the Leadership Club that we are talking about here isn't just a program, but it's a catalyst, a catalyst for change, a beacon of hope, and a testament to the potential within each and every one of our students. So as we reflect on the numbers presented today, let us not forget the faces, the voices, and the futures that they represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Franco, Ms. Franco, are you a student or you are employee of the program?
I'm so sorry. I am an employee of the program.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Freddie Esquivel. I am a father of six, and I'm here representing Leadership Club. As a team leader, I was a leader at Indian Springs High School. And one of the things that made our club so successful was that we made an intentional to connect with students Monday through Friday. We volunteered during lunch to go connect with students every single day, whether it rain or sunshine, whatever weather conditions, we were there for them. We made sure that they felt that they were heard and seen. To us, it's not about the numbers. It's about the students. Our leadership skills that we present to these students are guided to provide them with a purpose. And as a father, I seen it myself as, when we asked the students when they first started club, "Why are you at school?" "Is it because your mom made you come to school?" And most of them say yes. But after completing our courses, after they developed their skills and they're figuring out what their purpose is, now they have a purpose. Now they're eager to come to school. Now they're not even late to school no more. Now they don't like being absent. They would call and say like, "Could we still go to club? We're sorry we missed yesterday." They were dedicated to being in club after school, Monday through Friday until six o'clock. After having a long day of school, they still were committed Monday through Friday to stay to this club, because for us, it was more than just numbers. They're students. We did life with them. We also partnered up with ASB, make sure that we inspired school spirit. We made sure we had a cleanup day where we went around the whole school picking up trash. We made sure that our students from Leadership Club had an event or a sports. We were there to back them up. There were several times where there were students that their own parents could not make it to their event, and they would ask us if we would show up, and most of the time would be the loudest, biggest crowd in the audience cheering them on. And they were in tears because they saw how much they meant to us, and they still mean to us today. And in conclusion, I want to conclude that I hope you see as the result of all the people here, not only the impact that Leadership Club made on the students, but the impact the students made on us. I also want to read a letter from a teacher from Indian Springs that was not able to be here. Her name is Jerry Sagasta. It says, "To whom I may concern, my name is Jerry Sagasta, and I'm here a social science department chair and a teacher at Indian Springs High School. I have also been teaching in the district for seventeen years. I'm writing this letter on behalf of Leadership Club. The Leadership Club has made a huge difference to the students on our campus, especially students who are or were unteachable in other clubs and ways. They have blossomed into what they are becoming due to the mentorship and relationships they have built in Leadership Club. It is not to say this lightly, to even compare that Leadership Club is more effective in reaching students than any other AASB students who would have. And we're being left out in the narrative, felt included and involved, and they have had a place where they belong. They felt that they were growing and important. I saw this on the faces of the students that would have otherwise not had a voice or were afraid to use theirs. It is my firm belief that Leadership Club was making a difference on the campus of Indian Springs High School, and it's a very positive way. I strongly believe and ask that they would be allowed to reconvene and not only on behalf of the students that they have already reached, but students that will be reached throughout this program. Thank you."
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You guys look awesome. Today, I-
Let me get your name, sir.
My name is Isaac Franco. I apologize. Today, I stand before you guys to shed light on the astounding impact of an after-school program entitled The Leadership Club. As a fellow graduate of this school district, Sierra Suns 2016, and now a community member and volunteer of this district, I have witnessed firsthand the transformative power of this initiative, and I'm excited to tell you about it. This program has left an indelible mark on school campuses, created an atmosphere of genuine connections that extend far beyond the classroom walls. And I want to let you guys know, it's not merely just a club. It is actually a catalyst for change in the lives of these students. And the ripple effect of this program touches upon various crucial aspects of student development. This program has exposed these students to new horizons and experiencing things that they've never thought possible. And as someone who graduated from this district, I can't help but be jealous. I can't help but be jealous of the fact that they're able to be part of something that I wasn't along my academic journey. And it's truly heartbreaking to know that students going through things that are quite similar to what I faced in the past don't have access to a program like this anymore. It's not just about certificates and good jobs and high fives. It's about fostering social and emotional development, igniting excitement about personal growth, and galvanizing students to strive for something greater. The impact of this program goes beyond numbers and rooms filled with enthusiastic students. We've seen students who once felt disconnected from community find a sense of purpose, identity, belonging, and security within this program. And unfortunately, this community and safe space was stripped from them without warning. This program is more than just a club. It's a commitment to something greater than ourselves, and our impact was evident. I can say that confidently, not because, not because we sought out to compare ourselves to others to make ourselves look better, but because the results spoke for themselves. And unfortunately, some students were left without a community and without a safe space. And these words, to be honest, are not mine. They're the echoes of the students who found solace and growth within the Leadership Club. In closing, let us remember that our shared dedication to education should transcend administrative disagreements. Because in the end, it's about the kids, their well-being, and their future. This program was a testament to what is possible when we choose to prioritize the needs of our students above all else. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Liliana Duran, a student at San Bernardino High. I'm here to represent Joyco. Today I'd like to talk about one of the leadership exercises that helped me the most to build the confidence to speak in front of large clouds, crowds today. It is called a T3. We would usually do these every Friday to give the students a chance to lead a club and to share what they have learned during club throughout the rest of the week, doing lessons that helped us find our purpose, how to lead ourselves well, and that being a good leader means to be disciplined. Now, my T3 is called "How to Not Be a Follower, But Instead a Leader." One of the prime struggles we as teenagers struggle with is letting our worth lay in the hands of others. In other words, caring too much about what others have to say about us. This is something I struggle with. I want to share two ideas on why people pleasing can negatively impact your life. Giving others too much authority over yourself can be dangerous. People pleasing is rooted in not knowing yourself and/or your worth. I used to be a people pleaser out of the need to be accepted in life. During this time, I did not know myself, nor did I have personal boundaries, but this changed soon. Eleanor Roosevelt said, "Once, no one can make you feel inferior without your consent." In my experience, people pleasing is giving power to people to have control over you. You will always accept the type of treatment from people that you believe you deserve. Another quote from Jim Carrey says, "Your need for acceptance can make you invisible in this world. Don't let anything stand in the way of the light that shines through this form. Risk being seen in all your glory." Having the confidence to speak to you all today is one of the few skills that Leadership Club has not only taught me, but other students at San Bernardino High to do. I have transformed, I have transformed from the shyest girl in the classroom to one of, the one who has no problem speaking in front of others. This club has made me hungry to make an impact on those students that are going down the wrong path, to go against the grain and not to go with the crowd because it's easier to blend in. I choose leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jasmeer Adams, a student at San Bernardino High School, and I attended Leadership Club. For me and many other students, leadership was more than an after-school club. It was more than just lessons, games, and activities. It was a support system. It was a place for students to come and feel comfortable while learning skills that we can use in everyday life. Leadership became a safe haven and a dependable outlet for students. Some topics we were taught were lead with a positive attitude, lead with courage and vision, would have been, which have been helpful in navigating through high school and life. I've gained self-confidence, public speaking, and responsibility. It has had a large impact on my life. Leadership needs to be back at San Bernardino High School because it has had a positive effect on the well-being of students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leah Adams. I'm a proud parent of the young lady that just stepped away. Her daughter, well, my daughter, her name is Jasmeer Adams, so I'm excited to be here tonight. As Jasmeer's parent, I would love to see Leadership Club back at San Bernardino High School. Mr. Devon, his wife Donna, and their team, it's clear that they have the heart for our teens, which I think is awesome because teens at this age, they can sometimes be difficult to reach. You know the saying, "It takes a village to raise a child." I'm grateful for the importance to our kids, investing their time and their effort, but also seeing how these teens are drawn to this program. It speaks a lot. I love this club because it promotes our children to be leaders, to be confident. Confident in themselves, confident in their calling, and to know that they were made to be great. How my daughter got introduced to Leadership Club was her wanting to stay after school and hang out. For me, that was scary because I didn't want to see her getting in any trouble. But a classmate ended up inviting her to Leadership Club, and she loved it. From there, I started seeing growth in my daughter through the lessons that they shared with the students, and I would see her excited about the games and activities they would do. My schedule ended up changing to where now I get off work at five-thirty. And so leadership played a big role with me knowing that my daughter was safe being at school until I got off work. And it was also helpful with them feeding the students, me picking her up, knowing that she was fed, played a big role. I'm also appreciate, appreciative of this program because it gives our kids options. They need more positive options like this, where they can go in a healthy environment rather than going and getting themselves in trouble. So as a parent, I would love to see Leadership Club back at San Bernardino High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Um, my name is Yomara Herbert. I'm a nineteen-year-old college student that graduated from San Bernardino High School. All my four years I attended there. And I also graduated from Golden Valley, so I have been here in the district for quite a few years. So, ah, sorry. So, um, Leadership Club is so important, and to hear that it got shut down, oh, it'd be so sad because these students depend on us to be there sometimes. And we, being pulled out from schools, um, they're looking for us constantly. And we have given them a great option to turn to us instead of other things. So, um, a great testimony that I have was when I met Devo. Oh my gosh, such a crazy story. Um, he called me one time. He was like, I was on my way back from a trip with my family, and it was during the summer of my freshman year. Um, something about me was that my freshman year of high school was my worst year of like attitude, of lashing out. Um, it's mostly because of my home. And, um, the summer he called and he was like, "Hey, um, I just want to know if you want to join this program." And I was like, "Um, that sounds interesting." He told me about it, and I went and I got, I get there, my family's there, and he's like, "Well, I have no money, but we're gonna take you to six, five minutes, you'll be, we're gonna go all these places, um, and it's all free. Um, but it is a leadership program and you will be learning leadership." So the first day there, um, I committed. I'm like, "This is so fun." And sometimes it takes a little excitement, a little something that I give you that you really love, and it could be the snacks, to just bring me to Leadership Club, to bring me to this great opportunity. And then he hits you with, um, the things that you need to work for, getting to know that you need to work for things. And so I went and he was like, "You're gonna meet, the first meeting that we had, it was with a bunch of students, and he was gonna, he said, um, you're gonna be speaking in front of a camera." And I was like, "What? I never agreed to this. This is so, this is, makes me shy, like I'm so nervous." And we did it. I was able to do it, and that's why I'm able to speak in front of you. I am nervous. I don't know, I, I'm not never this nervous to speak in front of you guys, but today I am. This is so, this is so important, um, for everybody. I grew up with Devo, he's a big part of my life, and something about the trips, oh my God, they're so important, the trips, to socialize, and he took every advantage to teach us a leadership lesson. When we went somewhere fun, he was like, "Okay, fun time, but we're gonna learn something still today, even though we're going on a trip." And about the trips, sometimes, the latest probably we got home was twelve, but my parents fully trusted him. And he was like, um, my parents didn't even care what time I got home, knowing that they were with, me and my sister, because I have a twin sister, and knowing that we were with Devo, they completely trusted us. And it's so crazy because to this day, since I'm Hispanic, you know how the Hispanic women, they leave the house all, um, when they're married? So, um, to this day, I still have a curfew, um, till like ten, but with Devo, I have no curfew, which is so crazy, which I'm nineteen years old, I'm a full grown adult. But yeah, so just know that Devo is so trusted, and he's so intentional with everything that he does, like just speaking to me and my sister, he's a walking role model, and he's so excited to watch students grow. And I think he passed on to me because when I see students grow, and I'm like, "Oh my God, I'm so excited," you know what I mean? Um, so when they, they step up and they have courage, even like Liliana, she said she was able to step up here now, and she's able to talk to you guys. Um, it takes courage. So, um, it's just amazing. The program is amazing, and I just encourage you guys to just please really think hard. And yeah, thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Yolani Herbert. Okay, we're, um, Devo and the Joyco, um, company started working with me when I was a freshman in high school, um, two thousand nineteen. They're really important in my life and really have impacted me with the leadership lessons they taught me. Um, when I started putting the leadership lessons into practice, I started becoming a different person, and I started wanting to make myself a better version of me. And that's really important because when he had asked me to come back and, you know, be a part of this leadership club that he, um, came up with, I was very excited to see these students grow and very like, very deep into it. And so when I went, I was seeing these little me's, um, from when I was a freshman, and I was very excited to teach them and show them what I was shown, the love that I was shown. And when I was teaching, I was up there and I was speaking, um, teaching a lesson. Um, I told them, "Why do you think it's important to help people?" And I was ve- very eager to hear the answers. One of them said, "Why should I help people if nobody helped me?" And I was like, "Oh my gosh," like that really stabbed me because I see some of the students didn't have the opportunity that I had with Devo. He really created a big open door for me to come, and he became this father figure, and really opened me up. So now I'm able to speak in front of you guys. Uh, I became emotionally intelligent, you know, reading people that really helped me in life. Um, he taught me life skills. Um, and all this, I, I can say, I can truly say I became the person I am today because he helped me and the Joyco company helped me. And through my years, through my four years of high school, there was no other person nor club nor, um, program that came the way he came to me nor teach me what he taught me. So I really encourage you guys, um, to really think about this, just because it could be another person like me you say no to with this opportunity. So thank you so much for hearing me. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, um, my name is Nettie Herbert. I'm the mother of the twins. I wish I had a lot of time to express all the gratitude I have for this club, for Devo, for Donna. They have impacted my daughters and my family throughout all these years that I've known them. I've always felt very comfortable with my daughters being around them. I knew that if they couldn't come to me to talk about a situation or a problem, they had Devo, they had Donna, they had the club. I knew that if my family was in a tough spot, I could go to Donna, I could go to Devo, and, and they would help in it, in any way that they could. I, I, I was, I have a lot to say, and I know I have very little time. So I would like to ask for permission to, um, if you guys could hear the recording I made because I'm too nervous to talk about it, and it's very important. I would really love for other kids to have the opportunities my daughters had. So if it's okay with you guys, I would like to put the recording-
But no, we're not gonna do the recording. I think the time has lapsed for-
Okay, okay. Well, I, all I could tell you is that I couldn't afford the trips that they had. Um, I was in a financial situation that was very tight. I didn't have the money to take them to, um, you know, those learning trips, those trips where they learned how to interact with their, with other people, the, the trips where they learned how to, um, just come out of their shelf. He helped them in their emotional, um, state of mind. They got more confidence, they got more, um, trust in themselves, and I love that about them. Every time they went to the club, every time they had a meeting, every time they went to a, 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 a day out with them, they would come home very excited, and I wouldn't have to ask them, "What happened? What did you do? What did you learn?" They would come so excited, so pumped up, and they would be, "Mom, we did this, we learned this, we did that." And for me, it was very, very, I was very appreciated of it because I knew I didn't have the funds to give my daughters that. I didn't have the, the stability to give them those trips, to give them those experiences that they got with the program. And I am very grateful for that. Um, during the pandemic, one of my daughters got very, very depressed because we couldn't go out, we couldn't do nothing. But Devo was calling every few days, checking up on them, and I mentioned it to him, and he was there. They, both of them were there supporting, um, helping them out through the situation. And me as a parent, I am very grateful that I had other parents that helped me with my kids because nowadays, everybody's fending for themselves, everybody's worried about their kids, their situation, and they're not looking around to other situations where they could help. But Devo and Donna were always there for that, and I am very grateful for it. And the proof is that my daughters are right here supporting, and I wish I had more time to let you know how supportive it was. But I hope, truly hope that you guys re-contract them. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question from Mrs. Medina. Ms. Medina?
Well, first of all, I want to say the fact that everyone came down to speak, well, great things about the program is really nice. Um, but when I did go online, and, and I have a, you know, clarifying question, I did notice that it offers worship clubs as well as ministry, um, tools to help disciple. So I'm just curious, because I know within, um, the state, we have the separation between church and state. So we want to make sure maybe having even, having the district, making sure that there is no religious, um, you know, conversations happening-
Yeah, we have a whole nother website that's dedicated, whole nother part of that. So if you go to leadershipclub.net-
I've tried to, and so it says, um, because I'm looking at the, uh, school clubs, and so the after-school leadership programs-
No, you have to, you have to go, when we're submitting for our leadership programs, our contract stuff, you have to go to leadershipclub.net. We're really, really careful-
To make sure that you're not including religious-
Yeah, that, because we do know that that's a thing, and we, one of the things I, I pride ourselves in is that we get everybody coming to our club from every background, every faith background. And we've never had, I'm proud to say, as far as I know, we've never had an issue with that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I want to thank you all for coming out tonight, and, uh, it means a lot for people to come out and voice their opinion. And, um, you know, uh, I went to a conference one time, and they said that it's up, it's, it's, it's up for, it's it's responsibility of the administration and staff to do things right, cross the Ts and dot the Is. It's up to the board members to do the right thing. And, and your compassion came through tonight about the importance of the program. Uh, there are rules and regulations that have to be met, so what I'm gonna do is ask Superintendent Ariano to meet with the party and, um, get an understanding of what rules have to be followed, and then what concerns the district had, and see if there is a way that, um, we can continue the program. If I have board consensus to get the superintendent that direction.
I, I would just advise that they look into making sure that the curriculum does not include, you know, I know that they did speak on it, but just making sure.
Heard you loud and clear. And, uh, we have a comment from board, our student board member, Ms. Scott?
I actually had a question for the company. Oh, I saw your posters, and I saw the one where they had multiple high schools on there. But when I was looking, I noticed that Cajon High wasn't on your poster, and I was wondering why.
So we had not yet gotten to the point, we were just getting started. That was on the plan to get into Cajon and Sanji, uh, but, um, with circumstances, that was halted. So, yeah, we were very anxious, we were very excited to, to make it over there, but. It was not agenda night, so we can't have a lot of discussion, but Superintendent will be contacting you. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I appreciate you. Section five, closed session. Are there any, uh, public council closed session? Ms. Cunningham?
No, there are not.
We will convene into closed session.
So I'm here to repeat the same thing that you already know. On the twenty-sixth, my son fought, he was arrested. The school called me that he would be suspended, but then they said that the juvenile came and an- So I'm here to repeat the same thing that you already know. On the twenty-sixth, my son fought, he was arrested. The school called me that he would be suspended, but then they said that the juvenile came and an officer went and took him and arrested him. So what I'm here to say is something that I didn't mention when I saw you. On the twenty-second, they fought and my son fought, but on the twenty-third, he was hurt by someone. It was uh, he was alone. And on that day, they took that child to the nurse's office because he'd been smoking and he fainted from smoking so much marijuana. So on the twenty-sixth, I was called, they, they were gonna suspend him. And an officer called me that they were gonna take him to the juveniles uh center. At one-thirty, I went over to the school to look for my son. I talked to Principal Gonzalez and he said, no, that he wasn't there. Then um, I went around, my husband went back at, to the school, to the office at two-thirty, asked for my son and they said, no, up until five-forty-five is when an officer called me. I looked in every police station and until five-forty-five, an officer called me that then they were going to arrest and take my son to juvenile center. What I want to say is that that day, at that time, my son was at school the whole time and I was negated to see him. All of us mothers know that the fear we have when losing our children for that many hours without knowing where they are. So I looked for him in every police office, even the sheriffs and nothing. And then to find out that he was there at the school from the principal, I was pretty upset, I was frustrated. So I talked to the principal, I went to question him and I asked him several questions. He showed me some videos on the screen, not let me touch them or anything like that. And he was telling me that that was my son on the screen. I said, no, I had videos of my own and I told him that was not my son. My son nearly only gave one kick out of the whole entire fight. So that time, this uh, this gentleman had three different versions. And I questioned him and then he said, my name is Manuel Gonzalez, I am the principal, I am known as so-and-so. And I can also call immigration because you are harassing me as a human. So when um I said to him, you can do whatever you see fit for yourself, whatever benefits you. Um, now, my son was in juvenile court for twenty, or juvenile center, interpreter made a correction, for twenty-two days. And I, my son has never been arrested, my son has never fought. And ever since he went into Arroyo Valley, from the ninth grade to tenth grade, he's been bullied, he's been harassed. All because he hangs out with African-American children. Those that are harassing him are Mexican or cholos. So my son has known these kids since he was in kindergarten. He's never had an issue, he's never had a problem, he was in like him in a Ingram and up until he went to Arroyo, that's when he had the issues, I'm assuming because there's so many kids that come into that school. So I couldn't see my son for twenty-two days when he was in the juvenile center. I was a, I saw him up until a Sunday, first because of COVID for a week and then because it wasn't my day to visit. And then he had court and up until that day, I took him home on a Tuesday from the court day. I have never felt fear up until those days where I didn't have my son. I only have two children. I have a twenty-seven-year-old, my daughter, and sixteen-year-old. And yes, they are from the same father. People do ask me if they're from the same father and yes, they are. Yo hablé con los maestros y todos me dijeron que sí estaban de acuerdo, que el niño era bueno en clases, que respetoso, pero cuando hablé a la oficina del director, la muchacha me dijo que no estaban obligados los maestros a darme tarea porque ya había estado en la juvenil y los maestros después se negaron a darme tarea. So uh, my son was also rejected studies. He uh, they said he was suspended first and expelled and they weren't giving him homework. Um, they agreed that he was good in class, very respectful, but that they were not obligated to give him any homework or any schoolwork because he had been in juvenile court. When I also went to that meeting for the expulsion meeting, they also let me know that the principal had already given them notice that they weren't to give me any information, any homework due to the expulsion. Time.
If you have any um final comments you want to make?
Y me dicen que mi hijo va a ser expulsado y no están respetando ni la fecha que ellos me dan. Tenía yo junta el día viernes y el miércoles me hablan y me dicen, "Por qué no viniste? Tú juntas ahora?" Le digo, "No, mi junta es el tres quince del dos mil veinticuatro" y ellos, "Es el miércoles, es el miércoles." La señora me grita, me cuestiona, me ofende y no me conoce y ni yo a ella. Y ni, yo tengo el papel ahí y ni siquiera eso están respetando. Okay, so I am asking for an appointment or an opportunity to please say all and to be respected for my time, my appointment times. I was given a Friday meeting and on Wednesday, I'm called and I'm being told, why aren't, where are you? Why aren't you here? And I, I let them know, I, my, my appointment is on three fifteen, which is a Friday. Nope, you're supposed to be here. This person's yelling at me, they're harassing me, they don't know me. So I also have the paperwork with the appointment time, so just respect that time and respect my appointment. I did have a meeting with Mr. Mauricio where he said everything is on hold up until we figure out, but the principal isn't respecting that either.
Okay, um, I know uh Mr. Ariano will contact you, make sure that um as much of the education can be continued, will? I mean, things happen in uh students' lives, but no matter what happens, we want to make sure uh we provide the best possible solutions. And so I know I talked to Mr. Ariano, he will reach out to you to make sure they, they get the independent studies packets, the education continues and we'll continue to work with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Appreciate you. Ms. Macias?
Hi, good evening. My name is Maria Macias. I am the daughter of Maria, the one that just spoke with you guys. Hi, Mr. Ariano, nice to be you again and Ms. Anna. Um, I'm just here to kind of like retouch what my mom was saying at the end about the whole meeting of the Positive Youth. Um, on March thirteenth, which is a Wednesday at eight-thirty-three, I received a call from the Positive Youth demanding that where we're at. And I, I was so confused because I was just dropping off my son. So um, I asked the lady, who is she? And she said, "That is none of your concern. Where are you guys?" And I kept insisting and she just kept saying, "Where's Adrian? Where's your mom? And where are you at? If you don't come, we will just do the expulsion paperwork and just expel your brother right now if you don't come within the thirty minutes." And I kept insisting. I told her I have the paperwork, which I do, right here. Um, I told her, the paperwork says three fifteen at eight-thirty. What are you talking about? It's on a Friday. And she says, "Does it not say Wednesday there? Can you not read?" And I told her, "It does say Wednesday, but it also says three fifteen." And I don't know about you guys, but we all base on the numbers, three fifteen, and we go straight to the calendar. And that's what I did. I went straight to the calendar, put the appointment and everything on the agenda. And so, yeah, and she, they kept insisting, so then I just passed the phone to my mom. And the lady then passes it to a bilingual to translate for my mom. And she says, "Hi, my name is Diana. I am from the Positive Youth. Uh, we want to know where you're at because if not, if you don't come within the thirty minutes, we will expel your son right now in this moment." And my mom kept insisting of the paper and said that um, well, repeating the same thing, if you guys don't come, we will expel. So then my mom said, "We will be there, but not to be in the meeting because for one, our witnesses asked for the day off for Friday, not for Wednesday, so we're unable to be there for those reasons. But we will be there to show you the paper that states three fifteen at eight-thirty." We went there and a gentleman, um, right now on top of my head, I forgot his name, but was, he's one of the that was gonna determine for the expulsion of my brother. And we showed it to him and said, "Our apologies, this is an error from the front desk. We will do a reschedule, which I have it here also." And they gave it to us on April sixteenth at one. So um, I'm just, so then in that moment, I called because we were so concerned, we were like so pressured in that moment, I called um Corinthia that was there on the meeting. Um, and I told her about the whole situation and she sent me, she wasn't able to answer the phone. So I left a voicemail and she texted me because she was in a meeting in San Diego. And so she said, um, she said, "Hi Maria, let me try to get in touch with the superintendent or someone because he want them to hold off until I heard from him, which I have not as yet." So my thing is, they told her one thing, but they're doing something else at the school, like can they not respect Mr. Ariano's wishes? And not only that, but throughout this whole process, we've been, as my mom mentioned, the principal told her, uh, went back. We felt so much discrimination, so much pressure.
You said the principal said that?
Yes. I was there, not only myself, but a, a friend of ours that is really close to us. And I got so upset, I was so anxious. And my mom kept telling me, relax, relax, he won't do it, he won't do it. And like, I'm pregnant.
Um, go ahead, you can finish.
Okay, and just to shorten it up, my brother, he's, he's good, he's in honor classes. Um, I have a message from the, one of his teachers from um tech, from tech, that he was gonna give him a certificate because he was really high in his class and he scored one of the highest from all his students. And I just want, as my mom said, request an appointment to finish up what we have to say.
Th- thank you. And the superintendent may time, but I want to first apologize for the letter. If there was a letter that stated a date, a Wednesday and then a date, that's totally on the district, so I want to apologize for that. Uh, I'm hoping that it wasn't correct, that the, the negative um term that you said was used. But we, we have to investigate that because the district, no district staff should ever use terminology like that, so we'll definitely look into that. Uh, like I said, um, uh, it's our goal as a, a, a school district to ensure that we give students the best opportunities possible. Even when uh, things happen uh that are negative, uh, we, it's still our job to do whatever we can to still try to facilitate the best environment possible for your brother. And I uh, I can commit from the board that we're gonna do that. So you're free to come to the meetings as often as possible and I'll follow up with the superintendent and we'll make sure that he contacts you and your mother, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add.
Uh, Ms. Medina?
Yeah, no, no, just wanted to add with, um, if that also to look into the case with um calling immigration, so that's another piece. Um, y nomas quería decirle que le escuchamos y aquí estamos para eso. A ver si hay un arreglo. Gracias.
Thank you.
Ms. Chashki?
I want to make sure because she said he wasn't getting, um, they're postponing the hearing, at least till April sixteenth and he's on, that he's either getting independent study or something, especially if he was an honor student.
Talk to the microphone.
Sorry, if he was an honor student, I don't, I want to make sure that he's not continuing to have his grades impacted.
Thank you very much. We'll go into closed session. Like to call the meeting to order. That's section six. Action reported from closed session, six point one, certificated reassignment, HR CERT twenty-three twenty-four dash eleven. H.R. Cert. 2324-11. Be resolved, the Board of Education has determined that the following certificated employee may be released from their present assignment as a principal effective at the end of the 2023-2024 school year and reassigned to an assignment consistent with his/her credential authorizations effective at the beginning of the 2024-2025 school year pursuant to Education Code Section 44951.
Moved. Second.
Been moved to second. Vote, please.
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
6.2, Certificated Reassignment. Be resolved, the Board of Education has determined that the following certificated employee may be released from their present assignment as a principal effective at the end of the 2023-2024 school year and reassigned to an assignment consistent with his/her credential authorization effective at the beginning of the 2024-2025 school year pursuant to Education Code Section 44951.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Vote, please.
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Motion is passed. 6.3, Be resolved, the Board of Education has determined that the following certificated employee may be released from their present assignment as a principal effective at the end of the 2023-2024 school year and reassigned to an assignment consistent with his/her credential authorization effective at the beginning of the 2024-2025 school year pursuant to Education Code 44951.
Second.
Moved to second. Vote, please.
Aye.
6.4, Be resolved, the Board of Education has determined that the following certificated employee may be released from their present assignment as a vice principal effective at the end of the 2023-2024 school year and reassigned to an assignment consistent with his/her credential authorization effective at the beginning of the 2024-2025 school year pursuant to Education Code Section 44951.
Moved. Second.
Moved to second. Vote, please.
Aye.
Motion carried. 6.5, Expulsion of Students. Be resolved, the Board of Education, except and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's finding of facts and recommendations and orders in the expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900, 501485, 474625, 438313, and 464108.
Second.
Moved to second. Vote, please.
Aye.
Ms. Chahuski?
Motion carried. 6.6, Students recommended for suspension or expulsion, excluding mandatory offenses, but remanded to youth court for other means of correction. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts.
Moved. Second.
Vote, please.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Aye.
Motion carried. 6.7, Revocation of Suspension of Expulsion. This order revokes a previously suspended expulsion order and is recommended because a student violated the conditions of said order. Therefore, be resolved in accordance with Education Code Section 48917. The Board of Education does hereby revoke the suspension of expulsion and hereby orders the expulsion of the student with identification number as listed, 522415. Been moved to second. Vote, please.
Aye.
Motion carried. Other closed session action, the R. None. Section 7, 7.1, Reports and Comments by Our Student Board Members. And let's start with Ms. Scott.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Crystal Scott and I am your student board member for tonight. I hope everyone is doing well. I'd like to congratulate Sierra High School's principal and Golden Valley Middle School's principal for their awards on tonight. I'd like to thank Ms. Sophia Fuentes for her beautiful performance on today. And I would like to thank the Board of Education for the loving support that they gave at the Black Honorable event at Indian Springs High School. I want to say thank you to our superintendent, Mr. Mauricio Ariano, for holding a meeting with other superintendents to advocate for our African-American students here in the city of San Bernardino. Next, I'd like to thank Dr. Marcus Funches and our mayor, Ms. Helen Tran, for their support at the Black Excellence Gala at Cajon High School. And last but definitely not least, I'd like to thank Ms. Felicia Alexander for her support for the Social Lights Beautilian Program. I'd like to inform everyone that I am taking clothes and shoes donations for an upcoming event at Cajon High School for our students in need. If you have anything that you would like to donate, please feel free to contact me or give my contact information and I'll be able to run you down the line and see what we can get. Also, I would like to ask the Board of Education to attend the IE Black Grad, Black Graduation. I recently found out that I am one of the scholarship winners and I want to share that moment with all of you. And the event is in May. And lastly, I want to remind the Board that we would also, as student members, want to participate in the Read Across America event. I saw the post on Instagram of Ms. Anna Applegate and our superintendent reading to the students at school. And I was inspired and I also want to join. Lastly, I want to congratulate our own student board member, Ms. Tatiana Eden Ochoa, for taking Cajon High School's Speech and Debate Team to the California State Championship. Okay, and the last, last thing. I want to let everyone know that Sierra High School is giving away formal wear. So they're giving away suits, dresses, heels, and shoes. If you would like to participate, call them immediately. And thank you everyone for coming out and enjoy your spring break.
Thank you very much, Ms. Scott. Ms. Ochoa.
Hello, everyone. I would just like to say that I have lots and lots of good things to say. So this is going to have to go by rather quick. So I'm just, hopefully that everyone's relaxing and really happy about spring break. That's always very exciting. I know I needed this break. But I would first like to say that first, girl state representatives from high schools all over the San Bernardino district have been chosen. And I'm very fortunate to be one of those students. And I don't, and I know that that is a great honor to have. As well as those of, the San Bernardino County Art Show happened recently and many students all over our district from middle to high school had many art pieces shown. And not only that, but won awards. So I would like to say congrats to all the students who are very artistically talented. I would like to shout out the students who are receiving scholarships currently for colleges. And I think that's absolutely wonderful. I would also like to shout out the Cajon Speech and Debate Program who recently hosted the league championship and had 10 students qualify to the state tournament. Amaya Slater, Aiden Hurtado, Cassie Vargas, Jorge Zapata, Jorge Ramos, Joseph Saldana, Libia Rodriguez, Haley Ruiz, and Vanessa Clemente will all be attending the Clovis Bakersfield State Championship, which is an amazing honor and I hope that they also proceed when they're there. The weekend, this past weekend, we had a student qualified to the National Speech and Debate Tournament and Congressional Debate. And we had the second installment of national qualifiers hosted at Los Osos High School this weekend. So I would hope all of you would like to attend that. It's in Rancho and it's Saturday and Sunday where we will be trying to qualify for speech and debate nationals. As well as, I would also like to say that my initiative on human trafficking is still being worked on and I'll speak on that at a later time. As well as, would like to say that the VAPA program has been doing absolutely wonderful in our district. And a special shout out to the choir programs and the honor choir program that recently had a wonderful program and performance. And the director of the Cajon Choir Program, Mr. Thomas, who I think is running an amazing program, as well as the presidents there who are Anastasia Totoro and Grace Purba. As well as, I'd like to say that the prom locations have been chosen and the themes have been chosen all over the district. So I know many seniors are happy about that. Valedictorians, salutatorians have been announced all over our district. And I would personally like to shout out one of our own student board members, Silvana Vasquez, who is a valedictorian at San Gornio High School. I would also like to say that many students in our district have been accepted to the UCs, the privates, and many publics, including UCLA, UC San Diego. And I think that's a wonderful feat. As well as Joe Baca Jr. recently came to the Student Leadership Advisory Council to speak in our district. And not only was he very inspirational in telling the story or his career and his job, but taking his time out of the day and working with the students there was very wonderful. And that we got Dr. Moss to be able to bring that speaker and everything is absolutely wonderful. And I would just like to say overall, the district is just nurturing and growing such amazing students. And I'm very proud and very happy to be able to see all of the amazing things that are currently happening in our district. And I hope all of you guys have an amazing, wonderful break and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ochoa. Ms. Rojo?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here today. My name is Daisy Rojo from Middle College High School. I'm a senior. Although they left me very little to say, I am happy to announce that the student board members' application is now open to Student Leadership Advisory Council and including schools from Arroyo, Middle College, Indian Springs, San Andres, and Sierra. And I just can't wait to find out who the next board members will be next school year. So that's exciting news for us. And then, as well as VAPA, Visual and Performing Arts, thankful for our district to hold honor band and orchestra from schools, elementary, middle school, and high school performances. And thank you, a shout out to Ms. Mary Allen and Felicia Alexander to coming out and supporting the performances. It was definitely an honoring moment to see all the students come out from different high schools, especially elementary and middle school, just seeing them stay in the district and continue their journey. So differently, definitely memorable event. And then lastly, from news from Middle College, I'm glad to promote our Digital and Media Arts Academy that's expanding its education next school year where we will be educating and certifying students with Adobe Photoshop and Adobe Pro, Premiere Pro for all middle college students to have that education. And not only will these, this opportunity, this opportunity open doors for students, but also the district's partnership with Valley will also grow through the film and TV department. So I think that's definitely something that is going to expand and grow next school year. And I'm grateful for its funding to continue. And as director of our TV cast at my high school for Middle College, I'm glad that there'll be more foundation in order to continue that, that program and Digital Media Arts Academy. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I mean, to all the young ladies and I, our student board members, you did a wonderful report. You really intimidate me when I have to speak. You all are so articulate and just full of knowledge and excitement. It's been a joy to have you all participate at student board members. You guys are doing a job. You really exceeded my expectations. So I mean, it should be an insult to you because you are so just on top of it. Thank you. And that brings us to Section 8, Administrative Reports, Presentation, 8.1, Second Interim, Second Period Interim Financial Report as of January 31st, 2024.
Good evening, President Tillman, members of the Board, Superintendent Ariano, Executive Cabinet, and my wonderful fiscal team for being present this evening. I have the pleasure of presenting the Second Interim Budget. And I concur with Mr. Tillman. The ladies are fantastic. I was almost going to turn my, my presentation over to them to, to present. But let's go here. The objectives for this evening's presentation include the state budget and fiscal outlook. We'll also talk about the updated budget and multi-year projections for the two out years. Wanted to share an SER3 update. I know how interested the Board is on that topic as well as considerations and next steps. The Second Interim, as you are well aware of, is the second official revision of the adopted budget. It includes financial data through January 31st of 2024 with revised projections in this report. And the district must certify its financial interim at each interval. And I'm proud to say that the Seminole City Unified School District has a positive certification as I received the email notification today from the county. All right, so let's look at the state, the state budget. The governor's budget revealed that state tax collections for the 2223 school year are approximately $43 billion lower. And as a result, the estimated budget deficit, and that was a slip there in hopeful thinking that it was only a million, it is $37.9 billion with a B. So I apologize for that typo there. The legislative analyst, however, suggests that the revenue projections are approximately $24 billion lower than the governor. So the governor is far more optimistic on his assumptions around the revenue projections. Projects a statutory cost of living adjustment or a COLA of points. Uh, projects a statutory cost of living adjustment or a COLA of point seven six, so a little bit less than 1% for 2425. Assumptions and the multi-year projections. So first we'll look at assumptions and I shared this slide with the board during first interim. And I just want to capture two items of interest to the board. Uh, the COLA there for 2425 is point seven six and then 2.73 for 2526. And again, that may change uh as we approach the May revise in a few months. I also wanted to point out the um enrollment uh row. And you can see from this year to next year, we take approximate 2% decrease in enrollment projections. And in the uh 2526, uh we're looking at a potential of a 1% reduction. Um, which would have an impact, of course, on our revenue. And those are uh conservative. The multi-year projections, the first slide to show uh to share with the board, this is the unrestricted general fund. So the unrestricted general fund is funds that are used to basically um uh provide for the base program. This is uh teachers, um uh principal costs, uh books and so forth. This is your unrestricted general fund. I wanted to highlight two areas here for the board. The first one there it is, uh is the transfer out. So if you look at line number five, you'll see that 89.6 million. I did share that with the board during first interim. But I wanted to share what the impact is. That that transfer out is really a an absorption using um Esser three funds to absorb uh continuity of services or continuity of costs. And you can see what happens into the 2425 school year that the expenditures basically rebound um where they would typically be uh based on the fact that the Esser three is is basically mitigating some of those costs this year. But those costs don't go away. They return back next year. The other items I wanted to share with you on this slide is uh line seven, which is the ending fund balance for unrestricted only. We were were projecting an ending fund balance of 64.7 million uh this year, next year, 40 6.7 and in the second year out, 21.8. Uh, it is um being consumed by uh costs that exceed our revenue uh on the unrestricted side.
Mr. Komet.
Sir, yes, sir.
If it got to a point where the projected any balance was alarming, then we would take steps to uh like uh find vacant positions that we can eliminate and that type of thing, right? You guys are thinking that way, right?
Yeah, yes, sir. We've had discussions in executive cabinet uh regarding that. I'm also working with our fiscal team. And uh one of my slides talks about um assessing the um stabilization, budget stabilization uh and the ideas that came out of that prior to the pandemic. And so we are uh carefully monitoring the economy, if you will, but also what can we do in-house to mitigate uh the impact to the district?
And then also um you know, to me, the the unhonored actuals mean so much because I'm hoping that the unhonored actuals end up showing that your projections are close. And I say that because the only my only fear is I'll give you a perfect example. Say you have, if you ran up a report that listed uh vacant positions, positions that were vacant for more than two years, right? Then you got a pretty good idea. Those positions aren't going to be filled. Uh, or you could check to find out if those positions are not going to be filled. But then that'd be an easy way to to say that we're not going to be as low as it is projected. But I really think we gotta make sure we're looking at ways to um make cuts now before we get there. And uh the best way to make cuts is through attrition. So the other part of it is if if if, for instance, through retirements and people leaving and quitting, if the numbers, perfect example is the declining enrollment, if the numbers don't allow for as many employees, then we shouldn't fill positions where the the number of students aren't there to support paying for those positions. But we need to do that now rather than later. You know, you, when you talk about this cost of living, uh one one year is 8%. This this year you just talked about, what's the cost of living gonna be?
This year was 8.22, sir, and next year we're projecting a point seven six, so significant reduction.
And the point seven six is not because there's less cost of living increase. It's just that's what you go, that's what you're going to get.
Correct.
It's what the the state can afford to give us right now. But I guarantee you the need is is there for 8% COLA this year. So although they say that uh the cuts are not going to be felt by schools, we we're filling them already. So as long as we're have the mindset of positioning ourselves to get through this tough times that are coming, I think that's where we should be.
Sir.
Thank you.
On the restricted uh slide, which the next slide here, the restricted uh funds are those that uh typically have a very narrow focus of expenditure allowability uh and allocability, that which benefits that program that generates those funds. So this is the restricted side of the of our funding. And I wanted to highlight um the middle section, line seven, the ending fund balance. And you'll see that through as we go from this year to next year and then the second year out, those numbers also decline. And that is in large part due to the uh expenditures of our Esser three funds, but also expending down other one-time funds like the Arts and Music Black Block Grant, like the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant, Educator Effectiveness Grant. So there's grants that have a sunset that will be expended over the next couple of years. And then it has a direct impact on our ending fund balance for our restricted funds. Also to note to the board, what's not included, because no um expenditures were uh assigned to them for this year, but they will be in for um next year's budget is Prop 28, which is about a little over $8 million, 8.3, I believe. And also the Equity Multiplier, which is about 13.6 million, which will be included for next year.
You're saying that's additional funding that we don't have now?
Yes, sir. It's not showing in in on this paper. What it will show in our adopted budget presentation to you.
And it's not reflected in the any balances projection?
That's correct, sir.
Before you go to the Esser?
Yes, sir.
A question for you.
Yes, sir.
In terms of wellness funding from the state, is there any ongoing funding for schools that is designated and restricted for wellness? Like we talked about these wellness centers we're building. I know I superintendent said that we're taking existing staff, but is there any funding for new staff from the state in terms of wellness centers?
I was thinking of a one-time grant that, but that's not an ongoing uh source of revenue.
And how much is the grant for?
That is 7.4, 7.5 million, sir.
Right. And what do you, uh, how many years is the grant for?
Three years, sir.
And um is the, when you guys are planning on spending, using that money to do what? And maybe you could bring it back to us, but we should hear about that. Only my, the reason why I'm saying it because there's so much talk about wellness centers. People get the impression that the state is giving schools this additional funding for wellness. I just had a discussion with a group of people today and I tried to explain to them as much talk as they have about wellness centers, there is no additional funding for wellness centers right now. And my fear is as we go through this tough budget crunch that's coming upon us, there's this high expectation for more services to be delivered. But they can't be delivered if you don't have the funding to do it, right? So I just want to make sure that we're clear about the amount of money we're getting and if there's new money for different types of programs. And I haven't heard of any new money for wellness programs.
Bye, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'll do research and I'll have something for the Friday update.
And uh Ms. Ms. Husky?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'll save one of them because I think you might answer it in the end, but um what is the equity multiplier? What could net 13, six point? Because you said it's restricted, but what can it be used for?
Yes, those dollars are specifically earmarked for approximately 13, 14 sites. No, yeah, it looks like about fourteen or so sites. Uh, these dollars are particularly focused on the lowest achieving uh student group and they're site specific. So 70% of it is calculated based on the free reduced price uh meal uh percentage. The 30% comes from uh their their transitory uh percentage. So this this then um site identified from year to year may change. Uh, but the funding is fairly significant and it can only be used at that specific site.
And I have a couple more questions, but I'll wait to see because it might, you might answer it in the consideration. So I'll wait till we get there.
Understood. So I just wanted to circle back on the um Esser uh three. This this slide deck I did show to the uh board during first interim. Uh, we are on track uh to exhaust these funds um prior to September 30th. That is the final uh date of this year. We are on target and on track to exhaust by June 30. That is our goal. Just wanted to reassure the board that we will not be sending um any funds back to the state.
That's great news. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I don't take it for granted. That's a lot of hard work.
Yes, sir.
And it benefited the districts uh greatly. I look at the stuff for um furniture and new device refreshes. That's a big deal.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, considerations, next steps. Uh, just wanted to keep our eye on uh the current California economy. Governors may revise will be very critical for us uh a- as with other districts, of course, across the state of California. Uh, and also the LAO's interpretation, Legislative Analyst Office. Uh, definitely like to see and hear what their interpretation is. Uh, also our enrollment decline is, as I mentioned earlier in another slide, we're carefully watching that. We're also um utilizing uh one-time funds in the most strategic way we can that leverages our general fund to stretch that out longer. Uh, and whereas the one-time funds have a have a timeline, our unrestricted general does not. Also assessing the district structural debt to Mr. Tillman's point. Uh, we were looking at uh not only position control, we're looking at existing large cost items. And we're also uh focused on on a positive too, not just cuts. We're also looking at how can we grow San Bernardino City? And the board and the superintendent have been very focused on Vision 2030. And we will see in an upcoming board meeting um the presentation of that and the impact that can have to bring students to us. And that's the key um to to bring students into the quality programs that we have here in San Bernardino City. Make our city shine more. Uh, next steps uh is again that governor's revise in in May. And then we'll be back here in June with the 2425 budget adoption on June 18th. And with that, I thank you for this time to share this update with you. And if there are any questions, Ms. Husky, I believe you might have one.
Yeah, Ms. Husky, and then we have Mrs. Alexander.
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Um, thank you. So with the may revise, right now the COLA is less than 1% and I know like that doesn't even cover the cost of the PERS increase. So I'm a little concerned about that. And if the LAO is right and we've got 24 billion, I'm a little worried that maybe we'll have a negative or unfunded COLA. So um are we looking at those contingencies and?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, Ms. Chesky, um I'm working with fiscal, in particular, uh Ms. Trias Huey on multiple models of of what what ifs, if you will, so that uh I can uh make sure that not only executive cabinet, but the board is well informed on the possibilities of 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 good uh medium and oh, oh. So we we are working on that for sure. Um, and please know that uh since uh LCFF has been in play in 201314, a negative COLA has not been uh introduced.
Yeah, it's been a long, we haven't had a negative, I mean, 2008, nine, 10, all of those budget fights seem like a really long time ago, but it's not really that long. Um, can they take money from Prop 28 or the Equity Multiplier? Could those funds be reduced to? I can't remember if they can, because I heard some talk that they were tracking to underfund 28.
Prop 28 is is uh is 1% of of what Prop 98. So i- it really coincides with that and and I have not heard any type of reduction in Prop 28 or in the Equity Multiplier um as an add-on to um the LCFF, if I'm not mistaken. The the one thing that they are looking at are uh block grants that have yet to be apportioned or allocated to districts. Current items such as uh Extended Learning Opportunity Program is is I've heard that they may be looking at that um and other programs, um TK programs and so forth, that that is speculation.
Both of those would definitely impact us if they touched those because we've
Because we've
done so much for expanded learning and we've done so much with TK.
Yes, yes, ma'am. The the San Antonio Unified is really on the forefront of utilizing those programs uh to in a much greater extent in some cases than other districts, so that would have a a steep impact on us, yes.
And then my last question, because that was sort of like when you talked, it came up. I'm concerned about uh transportation because I know that is such a budget sucker. Uh, there's probably a better term for that, but I know that it, you know, transportation does um encroach quite a bit on potentially. Um, with late start, I know that our transportation costs increased and then we were helping, using Esser to try to help with some of that, right? And we got some money for late start to help with that. Where's, where are we going to be coming down the line on that? And is is there any conversation either about late start or about continuing to assist districts that that have to or that can't afford it? I know like the rural that, you know, don't have to because of that impact.
We we are currently getting um a a support from the state. 60% of the prior year's expenditures are are um apportioned back to the district. So we have that offset, if you will. But the 17 million that we have in Esser three right now, that's um offsetting general fund costs uh for busing will shift back into LCFF and that will be absorbed. The total cost is right around 47 million for busing for a year.
But but remember, that additional um funding that we got for transportation was huge. Because because prior to that, we we got no money.
No, I know. Yeah, yeah, 60%, I mean, 40% impact is still huge, though. I mean, that's, that's not budget dust, right?
Well, let me say this about transportation, though, just from a uh a long-term perspective. The district benefited by having transportation because even when they switched to LCFF and other programs, they gave us credit for the transportation and the funding followed it. And even to this, the point you talked about the 60%, if we didn't already have the transportation in place, we wouldn't have got that extra money. How much money does that calculate to be? That's 60% reimbursement?
So for 24, 23, 24, we received an additional $10 million. In 2425, we will receive $25 million.
That's a big deal.
It's a year delayed uh because it's the previous year's expenditures. And so our expenditures this year are significantly higher than they were last year.
And and so just, we just got lucky really because we didn't know when we did this additional bu- transportation, that that funding was even going to be there. We got lucky that they created this new revenue stream for us.
And that's guaranteed, uh, that's guaranteed, like if that's not something they can may revise out of us?
Is it ongoing, is the question?
It's in law to be ongoing. Um, so it, we don't see that being cut. Uh, but just to give a little bit of context, the district covered about $13 million in 2122 and starting in 2425, the district will be covering out of unrestricted general fund about $20 million. So that helps understand where the the additional cost is. It goes from about 13 million to about 20 million.
But what's the total cost?
The total cost went from 24 million to 47, 49 million next year.
Which is a big deal that our cost is only the number you named earlier.
Yeah, that's what's gonna, I mean, more or less make it affordable than, we know that that's a program that we can't cut. I mean, we gotta get our kids to school safely. So um I'm just trying to figure out what the impact with losing the Esser to the budget was actually going to be as we fund it forward. So thank you. I think that's all for now.
Mrs. Alexander.
Thank you for the report. I just had a couple of questions um under Esser three update. The device refresh, so are we, are you saying here that we've already achieved that number and? And the devices have been distributed to throughout the district?
Correct. Thirty thousand devices total. The first fifteen went out before Christmas break, if I'm not mistaken. The second round commenced right after Christmas break and still in the process of distributing those thirty thousand. Now, those that we're recapturing, we're we're also trying to use those as refresh for the classroom carts, if you will, so that there is a robust amount of devices that can be utilized for multiple classrooms across all of our schools.
Okay, so did all schools receive new devices?
For the for the most part, all schools K eight, I the high school does not. We ordered the touchscreen version of the Chromebook. The high schools don't use the touchscreen version. So what we have is we've taken the the best of the non-touch ones that we've recaptured. And we are refreshing them, if you will, and pushing those out to the secondary high school.
Okay, I did see that the elementary schools received the Hewlett Packard Chromebooks. So I thought that was excellent.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
That was pretty refreshing. Okay. My other question is continuity of service. What is that again?
That's an allowable activity under ESSER three. I think it's like number sixteen on the list of what you can do with those funds. And what that allows us to do is any of the operational costs that we incur can be shifted over into the ESSER three funds to allow us to continue, in effect, a solvent program district-wide. So we're able to shift those costs over into ESSER three. It doesn't negate the cost the following year. It just pushes the can down, if you will, the road one more year for us to what Mr. Tillman suggested is, you know, really taking a deep dive and looking at what are we doing now? So that we're set up for the future.
Right. And then my last question is, I ask all the time in terms of collaboration with the city. Are there any opportunities, especially when we look at the ongoing budget challenges, to consider maybe there's a way to collaborate with the city or the county when it comes to looking at maybe facilities or other areas that we know is a cost absorption, but it's also spilling into maybe another jurisdiction? In addition to the school district, it's dealing with the city or the county. Have we thought about that?
We have actually, under with the support of Mr. Tom Pace from Facilities, we've reached out and have had several conversations with the the city planning, also with the city PD, the police department, and looking at options throughout the district that we can do to improve not only our partnerships, but how we can have the biggest impact in a positive way through the partnership with our city.
That'd be great. Some of my hot buttons, I haven't talked about it in a while, but one of them is really dealing with just making sure that we are prepared from an infrastructure standpoint when we just think about electric vehicles. If it's not something that we can afford, maybe it's something that we can consider, especially considering the budget challenges. Or also just dealing with like land, access to land opportunities. I mean, we've worked with the county on our end, but maybe there's a way to consider that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. Section nine, nine point one, the Unforgettable, unforgettable foundations, twenty-fifth anniversary celebration. Do I have a board member that wants to speak to that?
President Tillman, that would be me. Thank you. Now, I just wanted to place this on the agenda for discussion with the board for consideration of doing a sponsorship with the Unforgettable. Hopefully, there's some information there in front of you or on the screen that describes unforgettable program. If you are not familiar with them, for those of you that are not familiar with them, they are a program that assists with does burial assistance for families that cannot afford to bury their children. Unfortunately, in our city, San Bernardino, we've had quite a few families that have been assisted by this program. Something I think that's unfortunately important in our city when time of tragedy happens to our families. I'm asking the board to support them in their next, I believe it's a gala of some sort. I apologize, I'm not looking at the flyer right now this minute. But I know they've been very, very active in our community, especially our city. Not entertain any questions that anyone may have.
Dr. Wyatt, and they have a number of different packages. What package were you looking at doing?
I thought that I would try to stay consistent with what we've done in the past. I believe that we have been sponsoring at around five thousand dollars, and that's what I'm asking for.
Okay. So, Dr. Wyatt, you want to put that in a form of motion?
There are no other questions. Yes, sir.
Go ahead. So you moved it, Dr. Wyatt?
Moved to sponsored unforgettable is the amount of five thousand dollars.
A second.
The move by Dr. Wyatt and second by Mrs. Alexander. Vote, please.
Aye.
Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Rojo.
Aye.
And Ms. Scott.
Aye.
Motion passed. Nine point two, Making Hope Happen Foundations Annual Gala. What level did we do last year? Ms. Cunningham, do you know what last year's amount was?
No, sir, I do not. I was trying to look at the sponsorships. And it looks a little different than we did last year. So I'm not sure. It says five tickets are included with the twenty-five hundred, ten tickets are included with the five thousand. So I don't believe there's like an actual table.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'm motion for five thousand.
The move for five thousand dollars. It's been seconded. Off for the question, Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Hold on, I had a light on. You want to?
That light was on previously.
But I did, but I do have a question. Since we're donating five thousand, I noticed that the table sponsorship is twelve, twelve hundred. Are we able to get additional tables with that five thousand?
And inquire.
Yes, please. Thank you. That way we can have more people able to attend.
Ms. Rojo.
Aye.
And Ms. Scott.
No.
No?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
About these events. So I was talking about them when we were going over the agenda. And I asked if the student members could go, but they said no because they serve alcohol at these events and they have a bar. And I was wondering if it was possible if we could go if the bar wasn't open around the time that we were there.
They don't allow, I didn't know they didn't allow, they don't allow young people at these events?
Comment, President Tillman.
What's that, Dr. Wyatt?
I just want to make a comment.
About her question?
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead.
No, at those events, we actually have student demonstrations that are performed. I know that a number of our students, I believe it's from a Royal Valley High School, come out doing art demonstration, as well as we have often student performances by either our orchestra or jazz band that is there. So we do have students in attendance, and I would be in agreement with students attending.
And we can make sure there's chaperone to ensure that the safety part is there. So we can change that, Ms. Scott. Yeah, we can ask because if there if there's something in the organization's rules that don't allow for underage people for legal reasons, that's another thing. But if it's possible, we'll look into it, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It was about the fact that if they come with us and then we're we're responsible. And a lot of the, you know, a lot of the adults that attend. And so they would have to have a chaperone or
Designated chaperone.
Designated chaperone. We would have to have them and an adult with them. The students that are either doing the art or the performances do have a chaperone, and they're normally not at the tables.
We're looking to it.
They're they're in another area, not with, not with the adults that are in the area. So I I, you know, we've been trying to figure out what we could. Like, we were talking about the headdress ball for them to go to the matinee so that they could attend because we want them to attend some of these community events. You know, the parades and some of the other things. But we're also trying to be mindful
Got it. We're looking to it.
Us being responsible for them.
Okay. The move seconded, have we voted? Let's vote.
Aye. I don't think I can motion in second, though.
Next item is section ten, action items, ten point one, approval of personnel report. Let's present.
Move.
Personnel report.
Second, sorry.
Vote, please.
Aye.
Ten point two, approval of the second interim financial report as of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Move.
Move the second vote, please.
Aye.
Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Rojo.
Aye.
And Ms. Scott.
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt.
Is it aye?
Okay. Motion passed, ten point three, compensation for school board member. Per District Board Policy Number ninety-two fifty and Education Code three, five, one, two, zero, a member may be paid for meetings he she missed when the board by resolution finds that he she was performing designated services for the district at the time of the meeting or that he or she was absent because of illness, jury duty, or hardship deemed acceptable by the board. Be resolved, the board education approves compensation for board member Scott Wyatt for the March fifth, twenty twenty-four school board meeting due to illness.
Okay. Since, does the three votes count in approving it? No, because Dr. Scott, can can you vote for it?
I'd have, I think I have to abstain.
But I'm going to vote.
I know. Oh, that's true.
I got you, Ms. Medina.
Okay, thank you.
I abstain.
Section eleven, consent items. Need a motion?
Second.
Are there any to pull?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. It is, I apologize, eleven point four two, I will be abstaining on it. This is a contract with SBCSS at no cost. I am an employee of the organization.
Moving to eleven point four two, vote, please.
Aye.
Motion passed. Section twelve, reports comments by union organizations, twelve point one, San Bernardino Teachers Association.
No report.
Twelve point two, California Schools Employee Association.
No report.
Twelve point three, Communication Workers of America.
No report.
Twelve point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
No report.
Section thirteen, mandated policy revisions, approval and adoption of board bylaw ninety-one, zero, zero. The district is a team to update policies that do not reflect the latest mandated state and federal law language. In order to facilitate the approval and adoption process, policies, bylaws submitted with mandated language revisions do not require going through the policy subcommittee and can be adopted on the first reading. Be resolved, the board education approves and adopts bylaw ninety-one hundred organization as revised.
Move. Second.
Move the second vote, please.
Aye.
Mr. Tillman.
Motion passed. And the next one is thirteen point two, approval of adoption of board bylaw ninety-one, ten, terms of office.
Move.
I had a question on this one.
Can we change the language? Look at the paper because I caught the, I caught the message.
No, 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 I just had a question at the bottom. It says if a regularly scheduled board election day is changed due to consolidation statewide or municipal general election, the term of the incumbent members, not that one. There was one about not that part. It was something about yeah, a member whose term has expired shall continue to discharge the duty of the office until his or her successor is qualified by taking the if I read it wrong. Okay, I'll find with it. It's been moved to second. Vote, please.
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
Motion carried. Section fourteen. Reports by board members, fourteen point one. Dr. Wyatt.
President, since I wasn't there in person to congratulate him, just want to congratulate Sierra High School on being selected as a model continuation school. Great job in Golden Valley Middle School for schools to watch. And then thank you to the board again for the sponsorship. So the two upcoming events, I know they're very important for our community and for our students and families. And thank you to IT for setting me up to be able to attend virtually tonight. I really do appreciate it and look forward to coming back in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Mrs. Alexander.
Well, good evening. And I would like to first congratulate also Sierra Valley, Sierra High School and Golden Valley for their recognitions. I think that's super awesome. And our school board members, you guys are amazing. Ladies are amazing. Thank you for your reports. They're very detailed oriented. And as President Tillman said, it can be intimidating because you guys are all prepared and have copious notes. So keep up the great job, ladies. I wanted to just acknowledge a couple areas. Last week, I was actually a part of legislative week with CSBA. Last week, I was actually a part of Legislative Week with CSBA. I felt honored to be selected as one of the school board members to participate and speak on behalf and legislate on behalf of our school board with Assemblymember Ramos. Um, we, uh, was there onsite or virtually with Rialto, as well as, uh, I think it was Indian Wells. Um, so it was interesting and then, um, Assemblymember Ramos did give us an opportunity just to share his priorities as well. Um, he was very high on San Bernardino City Unified School District and said a lot of great things about our school district. He also mentioned that they had two bills that he just recently passed, um, that were focused on, um, just education. So AB 1821, which would require public schools to teach true history of Spanish and Mission and Gold Rush eras that impact those that, that are, uh, California natives. So I thought that was interesting. Also, AB 2711, that would revise suspension and expulsion policies related to drug-related issues. So, um, a good experience, but also just good interaction with the other school board members. Um, also, Assemblymember Ramos talked about mascots and for us to make sure that we're conscientious about our mascots that we select for our schools. Uh, and he mentioned that San Bernardino, we don't have any issues or concerns. And, uh, when Mickey and I participated in Mom Mob the other day, we did have a mascot and we did talk about that. So I don't know if we even have an inventory of what kind of mascots we have, but maybe just something to consider.
You carried that a long time ago, Ms. Alexander.
He did say that.
We did a long time ago, trust me.
Uh, I also like to, uh, to give a special shout out to the ETSA program. Um, our Equity Student Target Achievement Program. We are launching the Math Excellence Program on March 23rd, which is excellent and super excited. Um, and if there's any support that we can do for our ETSA department, that'd be great as they launch this program. Uh, according to Dr. Greer, I believe we have about 200 students that have been registered and hopefully will be showing up on Saturday, um, because it's Saturday school. And then, um, I did attend the Honors Orchestra and got to see Daisy perform amongst the other, um, scholars. Great job. Uh, and, uh, it was definitely a great performance. We had the, the elementary, middle school and high school students, um, performed and I thought it was great. Attended the Valley College, uh, 98th Year Celebration. I liked that celebration, not so much, um, you know, it's an honor to be able to say your school's been open for 98 years, but the, the president of the school, she made sure that the scholars were engaged in the entertainment and she roped it into the academics. Uh, the aeronautical school, they performed, then it was the, the veterans that were attending Valley College. And then, um, the Arts and Crafts Department created pottery, um, and it was our centerpiece. And so we, we, it was part of the auction, but it was just really super nice, um, to be a part of that and to be able to see the students actually involved in the celebration. And I think that's it. The last point is, um, in reference to our pathways, um, I get a lot of questions regarding the Link Learning Programs and something that I'm passionate about, where I, I really like to learn and understand how students, one, get selected to be part of the pathways. I, I have an idea, but I think it's important for us to share that once again to, with the public about just our pathway programs and what does it mean in terms of pathways? Once the, the scholars are assigned to those pathways, how do they really matriculate? And are they really helping, is it really helping them to prepare for whatever that career path is? In terms of the certifications or even the insight to know what certifications they need? For example, the nursing program or even with logistics. Um, there's an area of opportunity, I know for a fact, I think we focus a lot on warehousing, which is great, but there's so much more to logistics. So how are we really, um, scoping that out and making it, um, meaningful and purposeful for the scholars as they graduate? But most importantly, the exposure and the selection process. And that's it.
Ms. Medina.
No, no comment.
Ms. Chusky.
Thank you. Um, I was able to go to Read Across America event at Vermont and, uh, I love the way they do that. I got to read the true story of the Three Little Pigs to a couple of third grade classes. And they were just, they were so well behaved and they were so engaged and I just kudos to Vermont. Um, where I remember you were once upon a time, Mr. Ariano, as the principal. Um, uh, I also want to give my congratulations to Sierra and to Golden Valley, once a night, always a night. Um, that's my alma mater there. And, you know, I just always appreciate Sierra. They've always been a little bit ahead of the curve on what they've done for our students who are not, you know, are non-traditional students or students that are attending the continuation high school. So I'm really proud of, uh, Mr. Marietta and what he's accomplished at that school. Um, I want to echo the, the Valley College Gala was amazing. Um, they really did a nice job. But yeah, the student, the way they engaged, they used video and student, um, student performance, like they did Grease Lightning for the, our audio, the aeronautics program. So they're showing the pictures while the kids are singing Grease Lightning and it was, it was really interactive and, and engaging. So congratulations to Valley College on their 98 years. Um, I went to the LCAP Community Meeting and congratulations to Ms. Applegate and to, um, everyone that, that put that on, to Kimber and everybody. Um, it was well attended, but I would like to see even more families and community members there next year. The format was amazing with all the tables that you can go and visit and talk to them and the parents were really engaged that were there. Um, so I thought that was a really, um, instructive and interactive way to present what we are doing and, and, you know, where the LCAP funding is going to without having, being lectured at, um, which often, you know, happens to parents. Um, I also attended the, um, the DATAC and, uh, congratulations, they honored, um, high achieving scholars with gift cards, um, for their, their, uh, academic achievement. Um, it was also well attended. Um, but again, I'm, I'm hoping we can figure out how to get even more engagement, um, with some of our, our district committees. Um, went to Mom Mob at Davidson. Um, I want to thank Gwen Rogers for, Dr. Rogers for continuing to, um, sponsor, uh, Mom Mob in our district on, on, in Dr. Hill's memory. Um, and Joe Baca was also at Mom Mob this time. So, um, it's always great to have his support on our activities. Um, thank you to Daisy for bringing up the fact that the student board member, um, application is out. I can't believe that our pilot year has almost come to an end. Um, these guys have been amazing in trying to help us work this out and I'm really excited for year two, so there'll be more as we, as we come along. Um, they will be selected at the May Slack Meeting, so in May we'll know who our board meeting members will be for next year. And, uh, stay tuned for our celebration for our school board members from this year. Um, I do have two things, um, I would like to have agendized. Um, one with a question. The first is, I'd like to agendize, uh, sponsorship for the Links Breakfast in May. Um, it's Mother's, the Saturday of Mother's Day weekend. Um, that, if there's consensus for that? Uh, everybody, okay. And then the second thing is, um, I, it's a question and a, and a conversation. Um, I'd like to know if, and this can come to us in a, in a Friday update, if, um, we can, I know we're not gonna have a sponsorship, but if we can get tickets to the Mosaic, um, event. And then I also, we haven't had a conversation about that, um, since we had the legal opinion. So I don't know whether that legal opinions come in open session or closed session, because I'm still relatively new. Um, but wherever that is, I'd like to have, uh, um, a, have that agendized to talk about the legal opinion and what that impact is for our, our work in the future. If there's consensus for that. Never talked about it since we got it.
There's consensus. And that brings us to 4.2, Superintendent and Staff.
Thank you, President Tillman and members of the board and community. Just a few things. Uh, first of all, uh, Dr. Wyatt, good to see you back. Glad you could join us. Looking great, man. So glad everything's, uh, going well for you. And second, I just want to thank Terry and your staff, uh, as President Tillman and everyone shared, it's a lot of work. And we have great faith in you and your department. And thank you for being honest, transparent and, uh, just presenting the information so easily. I learned a new fiscal term today. Good, medium, and uh-oh. I wrote that down. I, I always learn something good from you, Terry. So I appreciate that. Uh, Ms. Ochoa, thank you. You, you mentioned that you were the Girl State Representative for your high school. So congratulations. I was actually the Boy State Representative for Samrio High School in 1983. It was a, a great experience, one that I remember fondly and it was, uh, I learned a lot. So hopefully you'll, you'll find it to be just as, uh, as, uh, great as, as I did. So I just want to share with the board and the community that today I got to attend the 14th Annual Forging Hope Yawa Awards at the Salmonwell Band of Indians. And what a beautiful event that they have at the Yamava Theater. And I bring it up today because one of our city, um, organizations, the Samrio Salvation Army, won the Empowering Lives Award. And the person who went up to accept the award, uh, who is the business administrator, is a gentleman by the name of Steve Pickney, who is a, uh, Samrio City Unified School District product and graduate and whose mom, you may remember, was Martha Pickney, longtime principal at Hillside Elementary. So just wanted to say congratulations to Steve and all the work that he's done in helping people in the organization. He's one of us. So I was very proud to see, uh, uh, SBCUSD shining, uh, at an award there. And then just want to remind the board and the, the public that on our April 2nd Board of Education, uh, you will, we will be unveiling the final product of the multi-year vision, uh, 2030, cultivating pride and purposeful futures for students to thrive right here. We are inviting many of, uh, city partners, dignitaries, uh, we're gonna make a celebration. Uh, Cabinet and I will have an opportunity to share with you page by page, uh, what those pillar statements are, what the supporting statements, and how that's gonna guide our work, uh, for the next, uh, several years. Uh, we will be inviting also the members that, uh, showed up to be part of the community committee that work, and they did a great job. They were a fabulous group and Mary Rowan, I think, will agree, they were very instrumental, uh, to having great impact to the final product. So I, I think we're all gonna be, uh, very proud. So looking forward to seeing that and sharing also our operating core values. We settled on nine core values as a district that we'll be, uh, working on together and committed to. So, uh, thank you for the support that you've given us in that process. Little plug for Dr. Funchess's, uh, Teacher Recruitment Job Fair, everybody, on Saturday, April 6th, at Indian Springs High School from nine o'clock to noon. Is that right, Dr. Funchess? And we are continuing to look for the brightest and the best teachers, uh, to serve our kids. So I know I'll be there that morning to, uh, just support you, support our district and shake some hands. And hey, I'm an old HR guy. If you need me to interview, I'll, uh, I'll be there for you. And I want to congratulate, um, you know, Ed Services and everyone that was involved in the Your Voice Matters Symposium at Cal State San Bernardino. Even though I was not able to attend that morning, um, I was given a copy of the book, of the poems and stories that the students wrote about We Are San Bernardino. And, uh, I'd like to get you a copy. I don't know if we, did we give the members of the Board of Education a copy? We need to get you a copy, because there are just some great examples of students showing their pride in being from San Bernardino, either in poetry form or narrative form, that I think you guys would really appreciate. And it'll make you feel good about the work that we're doing for kids. So, uh, Anna, congratulations to you and your team. Also want to end with kudos always. Soul Point, uh, our student band, it's part of our Samrio Teen Music Workshop. Uh, we were informed that they have been nominated and will be inducted into the California Music Hall of Fame. And so that event will happen in April. So congratulations to Brian Wing and everyone involved with Soul Point. You know, that's my favorite band, because they were the band that played on my greeting here. So I'm very proud of them. And then my final congratulatory, uh, statement is to Principal Erin Freeman, who was selected by Assemblyman James Ramos as the 2024 Woman of Distinction Award. So, uh, we'll be celebrating her next week on that. So, uh, just great things happening in San Bernardino and, uh, just very excited to be a part of it. Thank you, President Tillman.
Thank you, Mr. Ariano. Section 15, Summary of Board Members' Requests. Review of Requests.
Okay, we have, I think, five. The first one was from President Tillman and, uh, Ms. Rosales Medina. They requested to have the superintendent meet with the Joy Co. Group and find more information and what can be done. Ms. Medina cautioned to look into the curriculum to not include faith and worship, specifically the separation of church and state. Uh, President Tillman and Ms. Rosales Medina also requested the superintendent contact a Royal Valley parent, Maria Gutierrez, and work to resolve that situation. Ms. Medina also would like the district to look into alleged threat of calling the immigration and using a derogatory term. President Tillman asked what the $7.5 million grant would be used for. And Ms. Alexander asked, how are students chosen for pathways? Once they are selected, how do they matriculate and are they really prepared when they go into the field? And last, Ms. Chusky, um, asked and received consensus to agendize the sponsorship for the Links Breakfast in May and also received consensus to agendize the Mosaic Event to discuss the legal opinion. That's it.
Also asked for whether we could get tickets for that independently of the sponsorship. And it's actually, I want to discuss this, that letter, not specifically that one event, but the, the, the opinion, the legal opinion.
Legal opinion.
Yeah, that's what I want to agendize, is the legal opinion, not the, yeah, not the, not the event.
You know what it would actually drive that? Is the legal opinion as to can you pay for a ticket for an event for a board member? Um, for that specific event? That will go a long ways to, um, answering our question. You already got an opinion to say we can't do the-
Sponsorship.
Sponsorship. So the next question is, okay, we can't do the sponsorship, but can a board member attend and have the district pay for it? That's the question.
That's, that's, that's the one question. And then the other piece is, what's the impact of that legal opinion on everything?
We already know what it is, but we, we don't want to, we don't want to accept it. But, um, it'll be clear.
Right.
It'll be clear, we have to just do it.
Right, but we haven't, since we got it, we haven't had no discussion about it or anything.
Yeah, but once we get those two answers,
Right.
then it'll be clear on what events you can attend and what you can't, in turn to the district paying for it. You already know about the sponsorship, so the next step would be for individual board members. Then it's clear.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm asking for, because like I said, we got it and it's-
But you, you see what I'm saying? So all, the next question is, we heard this part about sponsorship, but can a individual board member attend the event and have the district pay for it? That's the question. All right, thank you. Section, um, 16, and we need a meeting adjournment, 16.1, in memoriam. The board would like to recognize and close the board meeting in memory of Robert Bob Armenta, Liliana Villasuela, and Erica Delgado. Thank you. And now entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.